Right at 6:30, so I'll call tonight's workshop to order. And Karen, we have a roll call, please.
Sorry. Councilmember Husnick?
Here.
Councilmember Valento? Sorry. There we go. Councilmember Valento? Councilmember Erickson?
Here.
Councilmember Roberts?
Here.
And Mayor Bain?
Here. Let's invite everyone to rise and join us for the pledge allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have open forum on the agenda this evening. Is there anybody signed up for open forum? No?
It's blank.
Okay.
Not when I'm lying.
We will move into our scheduled workshop topics tonight. Just quick notice, we do that, that this is a working session of council. Working session that council's receiving initial information for the first time and our opportunity to kind of digest and work with staff. Anything we talk about tonight that requires official action will come forward at future meetings and in particular on tonight's budget or tonight's agenda, most likely in future budget discussions. But we're kind of continuing a lot of those budget conversations this evening and this is a working session to do so. With that, we have a couple of parks topics on the agenda to kick us off. And Jamie, you want to start with an arts in the park update?
Sure. So thank you, Mayor, members of the council for having me here today. I am going to talk a little bit about arts in the park for 2023. As you all know, it's every Tuesday, June through August. This year, we do have, the Fourth of July does fall on Tuesdays, so we will not have arts in the park that night. And our event will run from 5:00 to 9:00 at Lakeside Memorial Park. So I'm just going to take you through a quick overview. I do have some time at the end for any questions. But we're looking forward to getting this kicked off here in a few weeks. So we are at full capacity with our vendors this year and we have different categories of vendors at the event. So handmade products, people that are making their own arts and crafts and selling them in the park, farmers market vendors, commercial products, food trucks and community member nonprofits that aren't there to do any sales and just provide information to the community. So this is our current breakdown. One thing I just wanted to note is we've really increased the number of handmade vendors over the years and it's really turning more into that art fair, which is really good to see. And out of all the applicants we've received, I want to say over half of them are Forest Lake residents and then just, you know, really strong in the surrounding areas. We do have a few people coming in from, you know, other communities closer to the metro, but a lot of local, which is really great to see. So I've been happy to see that product category really increase as we've continued to expand and grow the event. So we are no longer accepting applications. We're full for the season. But that's a little breakdown of where we're at with our vendors. Food trucks, this, obviously, they play a key role in our event. A lot of people are coming over for the evening for dinner. We added last year two different food trucks. So we added a total of eight, which we will have again this year. We did run into a few issues last year with a couple really excessive heat days, which inside a food truck was 110 degrees. Some food trucks didn't work. Some people had staffing issues. So takeaway from after last year was just, you know, making sure we have enough food trucks, our lines can get long at times, and then just more kid-friendly options. So this year, again, we are going to have eight food trucks. We have quite a few returning. And then I'm happy to announce we do have a couple new ones this year that we're excited to add to the mix. Smoking on site is a barbecue food truck, which was pictured previously. So there's a little look at what they're going to be offering. The Forest Lake Lions is going to have their food trailer, so more of that quick, family-friendly dinner items. And Camilla's Takeria is authentic Mexican food. So Kona Ice, they have the slushies. Yummy food is going to be Greek and then our egg rolls and traditional Taco Palace. So excited. I think that'll really help bring them a little bit more well-rounded options for people at the park this year. And then the ever-popular concert series. This is a picture from last year. So it's really continued to grow over the last couple of years and we've really enjoyed a lot of different groups out at the park. So our lineup this year is on our website. And we kick off in three weeks from tomorrow with Sean and Ian Akamato. They were our only rainout last year, so we put them first on the schedule. But as you'll see, we have some familiar favorites from last year as well as some new groups. Ladies of the 80s, we have Church of Cash coming back. Chris Cruzy, he's always been a really big turnout that, every night that he's been here. So we really try to provide something for everybody and really encourage the community to come out and enjoy a night in the park. Lastly, you'll see two dates that are going to be, are denoted as Kids and Family Night. So what we'll do on those evenings, we'll have kid-friendly programming earlier on, starting around 5:00 or 5:30 until 6:30. We still will have the regular scheduled concert at 6:30 to 8:30. And then we're working on building out different activities that kids can do throughout the park that evening. So whether it's the Wildlife Science Center, the Baron of Bubbles, whatever that might be, we're building out some activities to carry on through the night for the Kids and Family Nights. So that's listed here. We also have Night to You Night is August 1st this year and we always work with the PD. They have a really great presence almost on a weekly basis, but we expand a little bit more on Night to You Night at the Park and then we'll end the season with our Community Corn Feed August 29th. I think that was my last slide, so we'll go to questions in a minute. We all, we are, all are also exploring a sponsorship opportunities this year for local businesses to get involved. So we're starting to work on that and really by next summer have a full plan for the whole summer. But we've got a lot of businesses interested in being involved in the event too. So working on that here as well. So with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions from council.
Council, any questions for Jamie? Appreciate the update. It's great.
We're looking forward to it. Hopefully no, hopefully nice weather like tonight.
Yeah.
We will have a good summer if that's the case.
How many rainouts did you have last year?
We only had one rainout.
Just one, okay.
Mm-hmm. We did have two excessive heat days, which were pretty tough, but we got through it and I was actually surprised at how much the community came out on those really hot days. So, yeah, it was good.
I have a question and I probably should know this, but being again new, like the budget and that comes out of normal budget for all the bands and that? And what is typically a price point? Is it all over the board or?
Yep. No, that's a great question. It is budgeted annually in the Parks Program Budget. So we have an entertainment budget. And what we do is we do try to, we can't have every night be like the big band and cost more money. So we do balance that out over the course of the year. And so this year, we have about four that are in that 500 to 750 range per night, a couple in that mid, four in the mid-range of like about $1,000, $1,500. And then there's a four in the higher end range of, you know, around $2,000 a night. And it's been, really been effective, really getting more people to the park. I think it's really been helpful and that really entices the business community. There's a lot of, like I said, people that want to have that marketing exposure and opportunity and to really be a part of the event. So I think that's really going to help us as we develop a sponsorship plan and packages for the community to get more people involved in that way too. They'll get a lot of impressions for how many people are coming out.
Councilor Roberts, just as a follow-up, the entire program series cast the city a little over $20,000 a year.
Thanks.
With eight food trucks, are those eight food trucks generally planned each event, each night?
Correct. Yep, full season.
And are most of the breakout that you showed us of vendors by type, are those also committed generally for the full season?
Yes. We, typically, we see the nonprofits select more, like a handful of days throughout the summer, so we just slot them in. But majority, 95% or more are full-season vendors, which is great. So.
If we were to think about expansion on any topic, like if it's expansion of vendors or expansion of participation, how much room, would you say we're kind of at optimal size for vendor mix? Or is there, I know we've, we've kind of gone up and down over the years and what are your current thoughts?
Yeah, I would say right now, I feel like we're at that pretty much optimal space of what we've done and that's having myself expanding that over the last couple of years. So we've added spaces in the last two, three years. And right now, it feels comfortable, but in a good, like I think we're at capacity. City staff have explored and had some discussions about how could we increase the number of food trucks and where we would put them. So we do have a little bit of opportunity there, but of course, then that would be taking away some additional parking. And so we've had a little bit of a conversation there, but always welcome to any thoughts that you might have on that. It's kind of that give and take and it sometimes is like a puzzle piece of getting the food trucks all in and positioned and set to go. So expanding, we're just going to have to take up some of the parking if we do decide to do that.
Do the vendors pay for that privilege of being there?
Yes, we do have vendor fees. The slide where I show the different product types, we have a fee schedule in our annual fee schedule that lists the amount that each type of vendor, the fee that each vendor pays. We've had the same fees probably for about two or three years. It seems like it's been, our demand for vendor booths has been pretty high. So we had a waiting list last year. People are still inquiring. So I think we want to have that conversation as we get to, you know, budget conversations and fee schedules for 2024.
Well, at least that helps offset some of your costs.
Absolutely. I believe, and I can send this out as a follow-up, but I believe last year, I think it brings in about $7,000 to $8,000 in revenue from vendor fees. And then adding a sponsorship package will really help with that as well.
I like the idea of this trying to be as much of a break-even event as possible. I mean, it's, it's here not to be a moneymaker for the city. It's here to be a great community event, which is always give and take. And I love that it's accessible to local artisans in particular and, you know, some of the margins on those food trucks is really, I mean, all of the vendors, some of those margins are really tight. So it's always a balance. And also maybe a good opportunity, as you mentioned, for exploring some, you know, sponsorship opportunity or some things that might make it even more accessible.
Yep.
Any other questions? Any other questions or feedback for Jamie?
All right. Good, thank you.
Thank you for the update.
You're welcome.
All right. With that, should we move on to special event planning? And Abby?
Sure. I'm just going to introduce us. So over the last maybe about six months, we started to, after the adoption of the downtown plan last summer, really look at how we're doing our current programming in our parks. The downtown plan calls for more events, more programming. And so we have formed a committee and I don't want to say too much. Jamie's been really spearheading this group and keeping us on track, but really trying to analyze, how are we reviewing? What types of events do we have in our community? How are we reviewing them? How can we streamline this? How can we make process improvements to be more consistent in event permitting in the future? Especially in the case if we would include more programming and events in the community. So I'll let Jamie take it over.
All right. Thank you again. So I did provide a staff memo in the packet for today. So I'm going to go over a lot of that and just want to take a few minutes to take it one step further to explain what we've been doing internally and what the goals and objectives are and desired outcomes. So again, just the background, as a committee, we all sat down and talked about what different events come forward within the city, whether they're, you know, public in the park or private events in the park. Karen oversees our outdoor entertainment permits. So, you know, she had a list of things that come through her door on her desk. And so collaboratively, we put a list together and we were quite surprised at how many events there really are in the community. And they all differ in types of events, where they're located, different requests and requirements, whether it's alcohol consumption, gambling, tent permits, license, liquor license, et cetera. So there's a lot of different asks depending on the different event. Some of these events, the Twin Cities Power Boat Races, which is an annual event that comes into Forest Lake and is downtown at the park. St. Peter's Annual Fall Festival, we have the Rotary Plunge. There's an annual block party and then there's other private events that come forward. So a lot is coming our way. And like I said here, there's a lot of different steps in this process and different avenues that people have to go for, through and different application forms. So what we're trying to do as a group is really improve that process. We know, as Abby mentioned, activation was really one of the directives of the downtown plan. And we really want to improve this process before we, you know, proactively, as we hope to grow activation and encourage events to come forward. We want it to be not only more efficient and effective for staff from a resource standpoint, but just also inviting and easy for the event organizers. So this is just a kind of our why. Is our big why is really get ready for more activation in the community. So our desired outcomes, really, it's just to coordinate the review of permitting of community events in like a coordinated effort across all departments. So we're all sitting down at the table, going through existing permits and application requests so that we can all be at the table and talk about the different needs and what that might mean from a city resources perspective. Guide policy development relating to the review of this. So looking at our current ordinances, what do we have that might need to change? What's missing? And so this group's going to always have a policy discussion at our meetings. A big one is improving the application process. So you'll see, this is just like a quick sneak peek or what we're looking to do is one form where it's, you know, going to be very detailed and have all of the potential event requirements on there that it's one applicant goes through and fills out the whole thing. Somebody might just need, you know, an outdoor entertainment permit and that might be it. And some might have several things on there. So we're looking to convert to one application that can be all-encompassing of what people might want to do for the event and improve that process internally of where that goes and how that's functioning through our group. And a big part of that too is then that will help develop standardized processes and around our special events process and approvals. So one of the challenges is, you know, do we need public safety at a specific event? And if so, what's that cost? And what's that threshold? Is it a quantity of people? Is it, you know, alcohol consumption? So those are some of the things we really want to provide a standard for so that when an application comes through, we can look at it and it's the same for everybody and we just know what we need to do as staff and what those costs are. So that's, those are our desired outcomes of the group. We've been meeting once a month and so far, it's been really effective to get everyone at the same table and talk about the events coming forward. So with this, this is again, just kind of a draft snapshot. We've built out a timeline for this. We're going to continue to work through some of the, obviously, right now, it's really heavy for event season. So we have quite a few events on our list that we're going to continue to talk about. And then really continue that policy development and a special events form to be created over the next several of months. Somewhere down here in the fall, you know, we'll continue to have some city council workshop discussion, continue doing stakeholder engagement later in the fall. But we really would like to get this completed at the end of this year so that it can be fully implemented in 2024. So. So for tonight, again, it's an introduction to you on what we're, what we're starting to work on and just looking for any council direction and feedback. And I have a few things listed here of the process of special events. You know, we can talk about what that approval process should look like. If we do convert to one form currently, some things come, you know, outdoor entertainments come forward to city council. Would we want all of them? You know, what level of approval? Charging fees for public services and just general thoughts on, you know, the future of events and safety and all of the things related. So happy to answer any questions or would appreciate any feedback or comments you have tonight.
Mayor Bain, if I might, I'm not sure if Jamie and I mentioned, but we have representation from every department in the city on the special events team. So everybody that's sitting in the room, maybe with the exception of Kevin, has, has so far been a part of the conversations. It's not that finance hasn't been involved and knows what's going on, but their, their time has been spent using other things more wisely. So.
That's helpful. Questions, feedback? Do you, do you want to, do you want to suggest Pepper? Just open it up?
I think if, any open comments that come to mind right away, open to that, whatever. If there's anything specific that comes to mind or that you'd like us to look into further as we continue to move forward.
A question that comes to mind, and this is a big, kind of potentially a big cost factor. How do we decide today on when public safety is involved? You know, I think about, you know, the level of effort that we do for the Fourth of July and, you know, the use of, I think we use almost, you know, we use the police and fire extensively and we also are using public works and bringing out snowplows and dump trucks to block traffic. And I mean, that's a heavy lift versus there's others. What is that, is that, has it been a standard process so far? Or it seems like maybe the answer's nowhere heading there. Has it been more of a tradition or how do we, how does, are we deciding that today?
Do you want to take that one?
Sure. So it's kind of been tradition and it's, there has been a standard, but there hasn't. And that's the whole reason why we're coming up with this committee is we started realizing when we all started talking together, I'd be talking to Dave about, you know, maybe getting barricades for a certain event and/or maybe employees to assist with something, whatever that might be. And then he didn't realize that he needed to maybe help out, whereas he might, in some other event, they didn't know that we needed help out. Different things happened, like the Leo, Leo Temple celebration that had started like six, seven years ago. You know, that was something brand new. So we, we had no idea what to expect. And that first year, I think they brought in close to 10,000 people and we had no idea. And we weren't exactly, we were ready for it, but we definitely needed more officers there. Impacted traffic on the roadways, impacted security, you know. And, you know, we don't sit there and, you know, card people or things like that. But it's just, things like that just came up and we started all talking over the last couple of years and realized that we really needed to come together and collaborate and that we can make this a little bit more efficient. So, you know, there's things that have been going on for years and years, Fourth of July. So we've just learned over the years and we've adapted and each and every year and learned from the year prior. Whereas some of these other ones are just brand new and we weren't, weren't sure. And when it comes to, do we need police officers there? It's, once again, we're kind of learning from different events that we've had. There's been a couple of events where we, there were, there's alcohol in the park years ago, I'm sorry, in municipal, muni lot. And we decided we needed to have some officers there. Not so much carding and things like that, but just to be there as a presence because we didn't know how big this event was going to be and ended up not being super large. But I mean, they were talking thousands of people. So that's kind of how that's happened and it's evolved over time. But this is really the reason why we came together is to really communicate on what needs we might need, what needs public works might need, fire, parks. So that's kind of where we're at.
Just one other comment on that too. So for example, in my parks world, if there's alcohol consumption in the park, there is a permit for that. So that's just another separate form that somebody would have to get from me to fill out. And then the approval process for that is, you know, Parks Commission and Chief of Police. So there are some things in place like that, but I think just really building it out to have it all encompassing of what, based on event type. And I think one thing we've talked about internally is how do we classify different, you know, categorize different types of events, you know? So that's one of our things we really want to, if you have any feedback on that, if it's, you know, obviously we have like the public-private, how do we categorize them? And then maybe that'll help us to determine some of those criteria for standardizing what's required.
A couple of quick questions. This application that's being developed, is it going to be available online and electronic?
Yes. So currently, we have our outdoor entertainment permit and permit with tent online. So we would be able to get this online as well.
And then, you know, if it's a public event, like arts in the park, I mean, the city does some marketing of that on social media and other things. Is there an element in this application where the organizers would indicate if they'd want some support, marketing it? Not that it's become city staff's job, but, you know, an opportunity to like say, partner with the Chamber of Commerce to just continue to push out, hey, there's activities happening in the city, let's get the word out. Is that integrated into that application at all?
I don't believe we've incorporated any kind of that marketing communications component on the application, but it's certainly something we can look at adding or explore that a little further of how they plan to promote. I think there was some, maybe one community we looked at had like a public outreach or PR component to that media.
We will be requesting, if they have a specific person for PR and media, one, to help reduce some of the questions that sometimes municipalities can get when you've got these private events, public events coordinated by private individuals. The Chamber has also been building out its website, as you probably know, and does have a community events calendar. So Nanette has advised that once we start to review a permit and would review it and approve it, that they're more than willing to put all of that on their community calendar. The idea being that we as a community would have one centralized kind of events calendar to really be highlighting and showcasing all the events, be, you know, any of the public events certainly. We haven't explored any of our resources, staff time. We don't have internal marketing, communication, PR. But we are trying to find ways that we can explore those partnerships in the community. So.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
It's always going to be a balance between public safety and burden, you know, to whoever's applying for this. So I hope that's part of your conversation, you know? So we want to make it easy, well, reasonable, let's put it that way.
So currently in, in, moving forward, is there a fee structure? You know, you talk about all one permit, but then if you're going down this, an outdoor permit, tent, park, so each one would that increase a fee, so to speak, to what the event would be? And is there any thought of doing it differently versus a nonprofit versus a for-profit? Has that been talked about? And I guess, you know, I would suspect that, you know, what, what about Rick? Chief, what do you think the, for the Fourth of July? What, what do you guys budget for man hours? Like, like that's an expensive proposition for the city, right?
It is. And I actually have it probably, it'd take me just a couple minutes to find it. But I'd say ballpark, it's anywhere from $28,000 to close to $40,000 for just police officers.
Is that just officer overtime?
Yeah, we started, I believe, it was a few years ago that I believe when you were both on the council, that it was asked how much it was. And I think at that year, it was like $24,000 and, you know, of course, things just cost more. And we have more presence out there too with different things that have happened around the world and at different events. So, and same with, with Dave and bringing public works in and the trucks in and the cleaning afterwards and, you know, those types of things. A lot of people don't realize that that happens and there is a cost to it, of course.
Mayor Bain, members of the council, we also as a committee are tracking our time as part of the review and permitting processes, the actual event processes. Each of the departments trying to keep track of those that, that might help us better align our fees or at least inform the conversation as we get more in-depth about talking about fees later this year of what this is really costing the community, costing the city. So.
I do think, you know, as special event public safety becomes more and more of a need, unfortunately, I, I think it's going to prompt us to start thinking about what, identifying certain events. And I don't know if it's something that should be like an annual approval or something, but some, there are certain events that are kind of co-city sponsored where the city, you know, on, you know, we are providing those police services for the Fourth of July, for example. You know, that is a city-provided service versus there's going to be other events that are smaller in scale that may need some level of police, you know, I think about maybe an event in the park that has alcohol and a large number of people that, you know, isn't to the scale of the Fourth of July, but also is going to require some level of maybe, you know, police staffing that, you know, I wouldn't want there to be a perception that because we do it for the Fourth of July, we automatically do it on all events. I'm not sure that we're going to be able to provide that. But that probably requires some definition on what fits in which bucket. And I think there's, you know, we have an appetite to support, you know, after like many different types of events. But there's certainly a certain classification of events that we're just, we want to support, but it might have to be at, you know, the particip, you know, the, the host is, you know, it's sponsored and included in that, you know, event fees. I think about some of like, for example, the, some of the events that happen at Lakeside Park, the participants that are participating in that and enjoying that activity pay in fees. And, you know, that, some of that should, you know, naturally go towards creating a safe environment and, which is different than Fourth of July and thousands of people to see fireworks at Lakeside Memorial Park. So.
That answer your question? Very good.
One of your questions is around council feedback and, or council approval. And I guess my preference and I'm open to, very open to other suggestions, but just off the cuff, I'm inclined to that, you know, council's role and park commission's role should be around the, setting the policy. And if someone wants an exception to the policy, that then that comes forward. I appreciate what we have today for the entertainment. I appreciate what we have today for the, um, entertainment permits, you know, coming through the consent agenda, for example. It's just good to know what's going on in the community. I would even though be okay with us moving to a ratification process where council, staff's already approved, it's moved on its way and we are just more reviewing and ratifying after the fact. Um, unless there's something that's an exception. I, I think, I, I, if we've got a well-defined pro-, policy and a well-defined process and you all are working towards, you know, the cohesive, I'm not sure we add a lot and it's certainly, you know, from a timing perspective and, you know, these are things that, you know, I think about. Um, you know, some of our community, you know, somebody needs a last-minute gambling permit for, because they wanna do some, you know, type of small gambling event. And, you know, they realize at the last minute their volunteer organization, shoot, this is Friday and no one's gotten the permit. And then, you know, I, I think actually us being so restrictive required, actually encourages some level of non-compliance that if we had a little bit of a less restrictive process around timing of getting through council agenda, might just help some of those organizations come more into compliance. My two cents. Any other thoughts on that?
So are you saying that it wouldn't be on the cons-, not even part of the consent agenda?
I'm okay having it on the consent agenda, but I think it's more of a, um, when I say ratify, it's more of we are affirming what's, we're, we're, we're affirming what staff has already approved and it's already kind of essentially after the fact, more of a heads up to us that it happened, um, which maybe that doesn't belong on a consent agenda. But I guess I'm trying to find the balance of us having the notification. Maybe it comes through the weekly report or something or some other mechanism so we can just see what's going on. Um, and, you know.
I think we have thought that there's probably different, again, these different types of applications might necessitate council review. Um, others may not. Maybe it's the first time the event happens, it comes to the council and then every year thereafter, it's administrative. You know, so I think we have, you know, plenty of time to kind of flush through that. We'll be looking at other communities and how they, um, review and process these types of events as well. Um, but I agree with you, Mayor Bean, there's a number of, uh, events or types of permits that we have that likely could be administratively approved. The, the code is there. We're checking boxes just to make sure that they meet the code and away they go. And certainly can provide you, um, mostly during the summer, I would imagine, or those more seasonable months, those weekly updates of here's what's coming up in a couple of weeks or next week.
Recent example, the graduation party that just is gonna have a little bit of amplified music for a few hours, administratively approve it. The graduation party that wants to close a street for a band, you know, maybe we're hitting a no and probably hitting a council, you know, affirming that that is the right decision, so.
So the question becomes really, what triggers that permit?
Yep.
Uh, necessity. So there has to be some kind of a, a line there someplace.
Yeah, I agree. And in the past, it's really been for the outdoor.
Graduation parties are a great example. I mean, we're, we're gonna license every one of them? No.
Right. And that has been with current code, outdoor entertainment permit, the trigger really is just that amplified music. So tracker boat races has come down to the park for a fishing tournament. They're gonna use the sound system. They've been triggered to then apply for this outdoor entertainment permit, but it's like a two-hour event. They're probably making a couple of announcements, but it's how our code is written that requires it. So changing that trigger, what is it? And then what are those handful of events that may have alcohol or over 500, you know? What are those criteria to have it be a council review versus administrative approval?
I, I, I guess I, I, I like the idea of it in a consent agenda in that it comes in the packet and you can see it. If someone were to reach out to any of us individually and say, hey, you know, this, they had this event last year and X, Y, and Z happened and I'm not real happy about it, having a heads up to that before that person were to reach out to you would be kind of nice, I guess. But I don't, not that I wanna micromanage the whole situation, but.
And maybe that's just part of, we're part of the notification process as the application comes in. Like we just get a quick notification, hea-, heads up, this came in, but it's, it's kind of separate from what's coming through the council packet.
Um, some communities do also require, uh, event organizers to notify neighborhoods, um, as part of their application. So again, we can explore a lot of, of how this is done, what's been done to kind of bring back before you some recommendations of if this, then that type of thing, really see where we're comfortable. It's nice to get the preliminary feedback from all of you though, to hear like, yeah, maybe we don't need to review these, but there's some that we should be reviewing and giving the public, you know, this is our public space. This is one way that we're advising the community of what's going on. And so those are all things that we'll keep in mind.
Do we also, um, I'm just on the path of what could go wrong. Um, do we also include, um, do we have that application include who their primary safety contact is? You just think about if something's gone wrong and like, do we know that and is that information in the hands of?
That is something that would be included in this one application form. And then, um, certificate of liability insurance is required. There's, we, we are collecting that, um, for different events as well, so. But having a safety, um, a new thing we've talked about as a group is having event organizers providing safety plans. And then having that run through our emergency management team for review. And if there's additional questions or concerns, then our emergency management team will, can reach out with, we need more information or this isn't sufficient. Um, so that is new conversation we're having as well, just to really focus in on that public safety.
To that end, sorry to cut you off, but to that end, if we could provide a template that just, we're not just giving you a blank sheet of paper asking for your public safety plan, but if we could give you just like an easy template of some of the primary factors we're looking for you to consider. I just think that makes that so much easier for people to put together. And I, I don't wanna create a 50-page form, but also a blank sheet of paper on something like a safety plan is tough for somebody who's not used to putting together a safety planner. Chief and, you know, chief and the captain probably have their top five questions they ask of every, of every event. Maybe that, I don't know.
I think that sounds good, some guidelines.
And we are definitely exploring, you know, like city Minneapolis, city of St. Paul. We're not reinventing the wheel. We're asking a lot of the very same things that big events are asking for with those, you know, please think about X, Y, Z and detail that out, so.
Other points of question or points of feedback? Do you have what you need of us?
I think so.
I do. Thank you for your feedback. Appreciate it.
Perfect. I'm really happy we're heading down this path and trying to make it as much one-stop as possible. It's good.
That was me. Sorry about that. Thank you, Patrick.
Brings us to our next topic tonight, uh, which, uh, which is our tenure plan update. And this is the, um, parks and building version of the tenure plan. The parks and building episode, right? We're in episode three of the tenure plan. Last chapter, season one.
I will go through and then again turn over to Chad to explain the numbers that we do on great, very useful that we have there. So let's get started. So like I said, we've been here, we've had given the council a tenure plan about a year or so. That was the preliminary plan. That includes all the funds, general fund, capital funds. It does include the utility funds, but those are not the three-year rate plans. So those are already baked into the ready plan. And we really don't address those a lot because they're independent and, and they're all, they're self-sustaining. But we have talked about the general fund and the capital fund. Talked about capital improvements, which included the streets, the basketball, the public works facility, and any other with capital needs that we need without going into too much detail. But why did we do this? The, the reason why we did it is it depends on the needs that we have. It's a good, sound approach to how you should run this organization, how you should run a business basically. Uh, it addresses the infrastructures that we need, uh, the equipment that we need, the rolling stocks, squad cars, fire engines, quad trucks. Tonight we'll talk about parks and buildings. This provides a, an organized and rational approach to funding. If we wanna keep up with all of these things, we have to figure out how to fund. That's where we fall down the best. So we have to be able to figure that out. But coming up to this plan and a funding method, it really stabilizes the conversation. It gives not only current employees and current council members, uh, new leadership, you know, it's coming, but future council members, future employees and the public knows what the plan is and what's going to become down the road. What we don't want to do is give too many surprises. I mean, we can't predict the future. We don't know everything that's gonna happen, but we tried really hard here to lay out every day-to-day operation plan that we see and capital needs that we see. And what we also wanna do is prevent spikes in property tax. Even though we presented that once, really, we're doing that because we're in catch-up mode. What we're trying to get out of is get out of that catch-up mode and get it so that we can level any property tax increases. We went through this with the water fund and the sewer fund about four years ago where the funds were in difficulty. And we had to raise the water rates like 11 to 18% or something. Well, you don't wanna do that. You wanna raise it to 2%, 3%. You wanna minimize that impact. That's, that allows us to, again, predict as not only council members and staff, but also public where their property tax bill is going to go. So it gives a really helpful, that's the real goal here is not to have too many surprises and not go up and down, up and down, or pivot that far. As far as the park goes, we're gonna talk about, its history is that we have had no property tax funds for the parks until 2021. That was similar to what we do with the streets. It was the first year that we applied property tax to fund maintenance or, well, fund park improvement. There is some maintenance within the, the public works budget, but for park improvements, we really didn't fund very much, hit it off. We added it in 2021, $50,000. And then in 2022, we did a swap. We, we weren't buying any much equipment as far as the, um, equipment side, so we swapped the levy there to give the parks a little more, more money and waiting room as far as their fund balance goes. We were anticipating Belts Park coming under major reconstruction, so we needed some kind of infusion cash. Now that's the second rule infusion that we did. If you recall, some of you were on council wanting to forgive it along to the park dedication fund. At some point in the past, there was an interfund loan to the park fund for, for construction, things like that. And they were paying it off annually. Well, that was paralyzing the park, any park projects at all, so.
Was the building of Fenway Park, right? The original build?
It was the building of Fenway Park. So that paralyzed the, the park fund. It wasn't, they weren't able to do any more major improvements or they didn't have minor improvements at that time. And, and right now in the 2022 budget, 23 budget, excuse me, uh, we have $50,000 in, uh, the tax levy. And we probably anticipate that to be okay today, but again, we will show you some other things we need to do. Uh, you may ask, what's the park dedication fund doing? Well, the park dedication fund comes from basically an impact fee when houses and new construction happens. Well, that's subject to how many houses are built or how many new developments we have or when, how many lot splits. And there's gonna be good years and then there'll be bad years. And for example, um, 22 of our revenue is $3,500 for park dedication.
Wow.
Can't do lot with $3,500. That's, that's, we didn't have a lot of buildings and lot splits, so that's what, um. Uh, we have budgeted for this year and, uh, probably we've booked that budget and what we want next year for the park dedication. We've budgeted $75,000. It's probably right for this year, that's optimistic. I don't think we're going to get there if we don't have any reason that we're going to have a number of homes come in before the end of the year. We're already too far in the year for that one and for that, that list to happen. Maybe next year or maybe we'll get some in this year where we can, I mean, that park dedication funds next year. But right now, $75,000 is budgeted, but it'd be realistic.
If we were to take a long-term average of what, I mean, I know, I didn't know it's up and down, but is there a?
No, I mean, there, there is. I think it, it really just depends on what. We can go back 10 years and do something, but I think it'll be so skewed in.
Be nice to see at least like a high watermark, right? Like low watermark is clearly close to zero, but it'd be nice to see what a high watermark.
A few years ago, it was $400,000 or something.
Okay, so back in, uh, 2020. Um, so back in 2021, it looks like it was about 400, sorry, let me scroll out here, about 400,000. The year before that, it was 50,000. And then it was about 430,000. Um, so I have the history back here in 2010. Um, it really, it really does vary. Back in 2010, it was 140,000. And then in 2012 and 2013, it's about 2,000. And then back up to 200,000, down to 100,000. So it's just really, this depends on that development that comes and where that number, where that number lies at. What Patrick said, just looking at the history of thousands in this fund, um, those are, those park dedication funds as they came in was paying off, um, back in 2010, about 1.6 million of an interfund loan.
That arra-
Those funds came in and look, it appears that that, those funds were reduced to payback from the interfund.
That arrangement wasn't, wasn't that arrangement that half of all park dedication fees paid the interfund loan and then the other half was available, so?
That was policyed?
Yeah, okay.
Mayor Bean, if I might also add, in 21, I think it was 21, 2020, 21, um, the state did provide some guidance to cities on how park land dedication can actually be, um, calculated and obtained by the city. And so there needs to be a nexus for us to be charging parkland dedication fees. Now with our newer developments, we will be seeking, um, you know, in new developments, ideally we will be seeking land in lieu of a fee so that those neighborhoods will actually have parks within close proximity to them. We've had a number of neighborhoods built without parks. So even though we might have seen these highs and lows, um, it's more likely that we're gonna see lesser numbers going into the future as we're gonna want to have more parkland dedicated. And then also that ability to charge parkland dedication is scrutinized a lot more, a lot differently. Thank you.
So what's the new for park dedication fund? If the plan you presented was adopted, we need $6.5 million to fund deferred maintenance. That's playground equipment, um, and we can get you listed up, $6.5 million. So that will get us through 2027. That's what, that'll catch us up to all deferred maintenance. If we get up to 2027 and that number, that would get deferred maintenance. And that includes, um, funding, well, some funding for Belts Park as well, even though we have some dedicated funding now and grant money. We, we need additional monies to do Belts Park all the way to do it the right way. And then once we get to 2027, we have ongoing, the ongoing maintenance is fun if we get there, um, based on the plan that it's gonna set up. After 2027, there's a big ask, I think it's a four and a half million for the, the expansion and upgrade of Fenway Fields. That's in the plan, but that's something we need to look at in the future and how we're going to fund. Is that in partnership with FWA, is that for bonding, is that through, do we go to the bond, go to the, uh, legislature and ask for bonding or monies for that? So that's a number in the future in 2028 that we can start to plan for that, but we have to put that in the plan. Because we have 10 acres that have been dedicated for Fenway Field expansion. Uh, that's a major thing that we're known for. That's in the plan. But that's after 2027, so we can start to work on, we can, think we can fund that. Um, the other thing we, we looked at in this time was buildings. Uh, and on your desk, there's a blue sheet here, and I wanted to just show you this as an example. Uh, the council approved a contract with, with a firm that would go through the three buildings that we have that are not utility buildings. It's this building, uh, the senior center, and the south garage, which houses the ambulance for M Health. I just wanted to show you an example of what, what this firm did. It went through this building and identified everything and put it on a schedule for its replacement. So at least we have an idea of when it's going to come to. This is only a few pages of what, what it came up with. But it, it shows, you know, most of the things here were installed in two thousand and thirteen and was built. And then it gives a life span, a lifespan in the year it needs replacement, and it gives a dollar cost. So at least we have an idea of somewhere where it comes. For example, if you look at this, this structure, at some of the acoustic panels, you see the rainbow panels over here, they're starting to go. Those are the things we've identified that'll have to be repaired. But you look at lighting, you look at carpeting, you look at everything that's in the building. Because what we don't want to do in this building is what we've done with streets and parks is get behind it. Because somebody, not me, will be here in about ten years or fifteen years and say, hey, guess what? You've got to spend fifteen million dollars to upgrade this building. We don't want to do that. You want to plan now, and you want to allocate money now so you can repair it. Now, the thing about this is, and the nice thing about this plan is every year you will go through and say, okay, do I really need the carpet tiles in the police interview room? Or are they in good shape enough, we can get another year? So as the plan progresses, every year that will be fully reanalyzed and say, okay, maybe we dumped, you can put the carpeting off for another year because it looks good. It's not worn, it's not, you know, we can not replace the toilets because the toilets work. So, uh, every year, I encourage you, every year, we have staff to look at this plan, update the plan, not only in buildings and parks, but everything that we do, and that's, that's the goal of the ten-year plan, so that we don't get behind it. And we don't have to come ten, fifteen years now and tell you we need another big amount of money for this. Better to fund it as we go on. So with that, city hall's in pretty good shape. We really don't need any more money, uh, until twenty twenty-eight. Uh, that's a start sometimes, but again, by twenty twenty-eight, we will have a few years to reanalyze what the conditions of everything is in this building. Uh, the senior center is, where its age is not in bad shape. Uh, the list, it needs some carpeting. If you recall, last year, we had to replace all five HVAC units because they were over thirty years old and they broke down. We have a jacket that's been closed off that we need to fix. Uh, we have hope for, for some lighting that we probably need to replace some of those, maybe even with LEDs for energy saves. So there's some minor things there that we need to, to fix. And then we have the south garage, which again, like I say, uh, houses the ambulance service and ha- habitats for pub- public, uh, herd storage. M Health, uh, is interested in eventually renting the whole thing. But we have to figure that out, and there's a lot of needs there. We're going to put off the analysis of that until next year. Not that much move up, but there's, there's this dynamic with parking lot and siding. Can we rent it to M Health? So is it worth renting to them? Do we need to spend, let's just say, two hundred and fifty thousand? How's that going to relate to what the rental is? So there's a lot of moving parts we need to figure that out. So we're not recommending, it's in the plan, but we need to have a little more time on, on that building and how we're going to fund it, and if we're going to repair it to the point, you know, is the building worth two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars? And what's the rent we're getting back? So there has to be some, some work at that. We won't have the time to do that before this year's budget, but that definitely something to have to identify. And finally, before I let Kevin Lucier, is that we have, uh, parks and buildings. We have two proposed options, obviously, for the east. Both indicate a tax levy increase and both indicate a sizable geo-bond. I'm sure you're not surprised if I might say that again, but that's, that's just what's, what's happened here. Staff recommends that when you get to the park fund, Kevin goes through it, that we use option one. And for buildings, we just, we recommend a lot of seventy-five thousand dollars for next year, and then have that increased to a hundred and fifty thousand by twenty twenty-six for buildings. That'll get us to a point where we can start to fund and build and fund out to start to address some of those things. That was real quick, it was real, you know, general. Is there any questions yet before I let Kevin go? Nope? Okay, our mics are not working, so we have to speak up a little bit, so I'll let Kevin go ahead.
Okay, so we're going to kick this off as the same way as, that we've done streets and all the ones before. We're going to start with the park fund and present two, two different scenarios on, on how that funds look. So like Patrick mentioned before, we're looking at a levy increase and some bond issues as the main source of funding in this park fund. So if you look up at the top on your first page, um, there's an unfunded capital and then a parentheses called increased levy. Uh, you can see in the twenty twenty-three budget, there's a fifty thousand dollar budget. We're proposing, uh, in this scenario, to increase that to five hundred thousand and then maintain that level throughout the rest of the plan, all the way out to, uh, twenty thirty-three. With that, though, um, right below that, you can see in twenty-four that there's still, um, some capital needs remaining there of having to hit, uh, a proposed bond issuance of two point five million dollars. And then further down in twenty twenty-eight, as Patrick mentioned, um, a bond issuance proposed of four point five million. That is for Fenway, as you mentioned before. There will, once we get closer to that, look at different agencies, is there, are there grants available? What needs to be done, are we going to do anything at that point? But it's been identified, so come a couple, three years, we're starting to have those conversations and look at that. So that number could change depending on how that route goes. But right now, if it was something we move forward with, we're not sure of any grants or any special funding in that nature, so it's just proposed that it would be full bonds, maybe it'd be less, maybe it'd be more, but right now, that's, that's our estimate. Um, right below, um, park dedication fees, um, almost towards the bottom. As we mentioned, that we had seventy-five thousand in the twenty twenty-three budget, which at the time was very optimistic. Um, looking at it, putting an amount in there of twenty-five thousand, maintaining that flat for the next, for the next ten years seemed reasonable. Um, there was also some discussion that that's even feasible, if even that's too high. So that, that is a factor in here, but then you're going to have, as you, we talked a little bit before, you're going to have your good years, you're going to have your bad years. And that's where you can look at when you get to those bond years and those levy years, maybe being able to adjust those slightly depending if those, uh, park dedication fees come in hopefully better than anticipated. But where we get to that, uh, page two, the, this is the plan that was put together, uh, by staff for all of the different parks in the cities and in the city and the type of work that was to be, that is, uh, proposed and to be done at those parks. Um, you can see, starting in twenty twenty-five, it's about one point five million all the way out till twenty twenty-three. At various different parks, doing various different things at those parks, and that just rolls up, um, into top schedule as an expenditure. So how are we going to pay for basically one point five billion every year as we go, as we go forward?
The items on this list align with the park master plan update? Is that what this, where that comes from?
Correct, this came directly from that plan. Um, I got this from Dave and Abby. I took that plan, plugged, uh, plugged it into here, just made sure, took their total expenditures, um, tried to put it in a readable format so we could see, here's the park, here's the type of work that's going, that's going to be done. This is directly the schedule that, that they provided, just transposed onto this schedule.
Mayor Vane, if I might just add, some of this is catch-up work. I think there's at least three years, if I'm right, Dave. We're behind on just our standard replacement, twenty-year replacement schedule. So the park de- plan does note that, but the park plan is really forward-thinking, and some of these you might see in the plan as not necessarily needing, you know, needs work now, but then to be put on the schedule for twenty years out.
Is that, is that something that's online or something that's...
It isn't available yet, it's just been in draft format because we have been in kind of a parks limbo. Um, it's a plan that we had discussed, not necessarily releasing a draft until we were, were ready with a commission to work through final review and approval with the future commission in this council.
Does that, I think we're asking that question because...
So we're, we're basing these numbers off of a draft of a plan?
We are basing these numbers off a draft of a plan, but that draft of a plan is utilizing a very industry-specific, um, schedule for park land replacement. There are some portions that you'll see in that capital improvement, improvement plan, such as like Fenway Expansion. Those are things we heard about as part of our master plan process and update. Also, Summerfield Park, um, a very underutilized, is it Summerfield? Very underutilized park, we heard during the planning process that other improvements or areas where we're deficient to the community could be incorporated into the park, into Summerfield. So you'll see some of that in there. But a large portion of this plan in the first ten years is really just catching us up with what we, to get us back on our standard regular routine development and replacement schedule.
So is there, is that something council can see, current, what, I mean, like, for newer people, like, you have something, right?
So, Mayor Member of Council, um, the twenty fourteen parks plan that we do have on our website, you'll see a lot of what, um, Abby's talking about of the, those are still pulled through from there. Things that just weren't done because there was that lack of funding. So the park replacements, um, that is still pulling forward. And the master plan updates that staff's working on is the forward-thinking of how do we develop that in the ten-year plan and align resources with it. Um, so we're, we're pulling some of that, and then we're really looking at the national standards of where we're deficient based on our community size and, and things of that nature. So it is pulling forward, and that twenty fourteen plan is on there, um, but it's just a better roadmap moving forward.
Yeah, so in other words, our twenty fourteen plan is our adopted plan. This is bouncing off of that.
Yep, and you'll see some of those things in there that still aren't done.
Did that, did that process, um, did that process evaluate, um, kind of our park inventory? And, um, we, we, like, take, uh, did, did that plan kind of take a look at our situation, which is, we have a lot of parcels, we've, we have a lot of parcels, and we have a lot of parcels that have been under-invested, either in the infrastructure that's on them or in the, um, lack of maintenance of the infrastructure we do have, right? And so did that plan take a look at kind of the park distribution of, do we have the right number of parks?
We did, we compared ourselves with industry standards, um, essentially of the national park and rec-
Recreation and park.
Recreation and park, I knew I'd get it wrong because it's a little...
NRPA, National Recreation and Park Association.
I believe, I'd have to go back and look, I think we even did look at some of our peer communities as well of where we were sitting in terms of, um, per capita spending, per capita parks, per capita trails.
Well, in comparing that, how do we, how do we stack up?
Low.
In terms of number of parks or...
In terms of everything.
It's just such a hard, we're just such, in such a, this is just such a tough schedule to look at because it is a big number that we have not historically funded, so it's a big s- change. But then my reaction when I look at this list is it's a lot of little things that we could do each of these things, and I'm not sure it's going to be the, at the end of the day, what we are look... Can you go, can you flip to the bond? Actually, I have it in front of me. So we're going to, you know, tell the community potentially that we're going to bond two and a half million dollars for parks. And there's so many little things on this list that, I'm, I, it's easy to, um, I don't, it's, it's a lot of, um, small, it's small pieces. It's not a ban, there's not like a banner headline park, it's a...
Right, beyond, beyond Belts Park, it's difficult for the public to see that we tore out a playground, put it to playground. The neighborhood kind of seasons, but that's the things we're talking about. It's not the big thing, it's just, you know, the swing sets new, um, jump jumps are new. But, you know, the rest of the city, so it's a hard perception to see that. Except when you live quite close or your kids use the park.
Oh, so on that, that twenty fourteen plan, was that public input and how did that come up? Like, you, you look at Shields, uh, Lake Park, Zeeble, Trail Dock, was that, like, was there, like, the public said, hey, we really want something out there? Is it, was there some history of how that came about or...
I'm, I'm sure, I wasn't here in two thousand and fourteen, but reading through the two thousand and fourteen plan and knowing the process, I'm sure there are public hearings, public open houses, just like we do with other things. And we got community input on what was, what they wanted, what they thought they saw, what they thought they needed. And then with the draft plan that we did in some final form coming up, we did the same thing. There was, there was input, there were surveys, there was, the public was involved in telling us what they needed. Some of it also in this whole plan is what staff, I mean, we see, we see a playground that needs to be replaced because it's, it's either past the standard or it's not the same, so. But some of the improvements, that you see some of the budget improvements, Belts Park and some of the others, had a public input.
You know, we, we, we've, if I can recall history here. So we, in twenty fourteen, we built this master park plan, and then it seems like we shifted policy to say, and Jamie, you're going to have to correct me on my history if I'm off track, but I think we shifted policy to say, okay, this is nice, and it's nice we've got this plan, but really, we're going to focus on the three premier parks. We're going to focus on Fenway, we're going to focus on Belts, and we're going to focus on Lakeside. And it, is, was that a, was that a actual, am I, am I correct in that? That there was more of a focus for a period of time in that, from an effort and certainly dollars spent, there was less priority on some of these?
So I was also not here in twenty fourteen when the plan was developed, and since I have been here, it's been communicated that it's just really a guiding document and as funding allows. Through my time, the first few years were really, anytime park dedication came in, fifty percent, like we talked about, went to the interfund loan, and we had fifty percent available. Um, so when I started, we had a zero, we had zero dollars in the park dedication fund, and slowly over the years, built that up a little bit. So our capital improvement plan, because there was never a tax levy request to the council, it was always park dedication funded. It was the same five projects for like year after year after year. And in my role, I've never had to develop, we never have developed the ten, fifteen years because the same five projects kept just moving down annually. And it was things with Fenway Park, Belts Park, um, Lakeside, had needed new equipment. So it's just been shuffling it down, and just as, you know, earlier in the presentation, that since I've been here, the twenty twenty-one was the first time there was any tax levy dollars to parks. So we've really tried to, as a parks department and with the commission, tackle some of those other little projects when we needed to, whether it was just using the budgeted maintenance funds, um, really trying to be as frugal as we could to make some park improvements. Um, Bayview Park, we put in a little structure there, and Cedar, um, that's Clear Lake Park. So we've been doing what we can, but there was just that mindset of there wasn't the funding, but use it as a guide as we're able to. And I, there is the trails component, and I know, um, our city engineer, Ryan Goodman, did a really great job chipping away at some of those trail segments, um, in conjunction with local street projects. So we've taken care of some of those trail priorities. But this just is the park side of things, and, um, so I hope that kind of helps frame that, but it was a guiding document.
Yeah, and in the park world, there, there are classifications of parks, and one's a community park. So if you take your major parks, those are the community parks. But neighborhood parks and are important and are necessary. It, it helps the sense of the neighborhood. It allows you to bring your kindergartner over there to learn to ride their bike or play on the swings or, or, you know, maybe there's a small ball field that the kids can play. So while communities, three community parks are great, really, and if you remember back to when we did the strategic plan, one of the things that were really strong and communicated to us from the public was... things that were really strong and communicated to us from the public was the need, they wanted the parks, they wanted the trails and parks, and what you don't want is you don't want three parks dominating, you don't want to have people that have to get in their cars and go to a park, you want to get them, I mean, they don't have to be block by block by block. But it is a necessity to have neighborhood parks, because it is, it does build the community in that neighborhood.
I think that the big piece here is, even on Patrick's presentations, that 24 to 27 is deferred maintenance. So even if today you say, no, we don't want to spend any money, then everything in 24, I'm just gonna move to 25, and then we don't do anything in 25, it's gonna move to 26. Oh, there's stuff in 24 that should be, have been replaced in 2020, you know, so it's already five years past when it should be replaced, so it's no different than when I came to Public Works and we had five dump trucks that were from the 19, early 1990s, you know, so they were just stacked every year and it's one of those things you're never gonna get away from, you know, like you said, it's, it's, you don't make that big splash by doing a Fenway Park, but it's the same thing as a streets project, you know, you you kick that down the roads along the streets and all of a sudden, we have a big expense, the same thing with parks is, these numbers aren't gonna go away, they're just gonna get more expensive and they're just gonna keep stacking on top of each other. So it's, that's kind of where we're at.
In terms of wanting to evaluate all options, um, is there ever a plan that is feasible around park decommissioning of saying maybe our inventory mix is not right, and maybe there are certain parks that we should repurpose for something else? And I don't know what that looks like, I don't know if that's an option, but are we able to? Let's just take an example, um, I don't even want to pick one, because whatever neighborhood I pick is going to not be happy, but.
When you say repurpose?
To say, we have decided that this particular park, actually, I will say, Shady Trails Park, I walk through it frequently. It is a pass-through from neighborhood to neighborhood, there is nothing there. I'm not sure if anything could be there, but it is an area where we should probably be spending less than zero, other than maybe, like, let's make sure there's not garbage and brush.
I think that's the eventual point in review of the new master plan, where we spend our money. What park should be developed, should they be a passive park, should they be an active park, should they evolve? Should they have a test for it, those things need to be determined. But the whole point here is until, till after 2027, none of that, I mean.
It doesn't even matter.
It doesn't matter, because this is all parks that are used and have equipment and they need to be replaced.
I guess maybe my question's even broader is, can we sell that land? I mean, can you, can you sell that land to fund other projects or to like re?
It would never encourage you to sell a parkland. That's a decision you can make, but land, once it goes away, it goes away, it gets more expensive to get and later. So if you sell this neighborhood park and 20 years down the road, the neighborhood wants the park, you're gonna find land, it's gonna be, but to answer your question, sometimes you can sell parkland, sometimes you can't, depends on how it's.
I look at this question like how school, how school districts look at schools, right? Nobody loves closing an elementary school, but it is part of what they have had to make that very difficult decision, and.
And I would argue you don't have enough parks anyways, so going backwards, in my opinion, and, and some of the material that the plan has, your parks are inadequate.
I, I, I hear, I hear what you're saying and I appreciate the professional perspective, but we also have, have lived in a community that up until this point, 100 years, has not used tax dollars to support parks, and so to, to swing is just really hard.
It's a decision, but in 100 years, you have to have 100, 100 house subdivision, so, and that's, I mean, it is balancing, I can only put a council, staff, how to, how to efficiently and smartly use the funds that you give us to use. We're just trying to tell you what we think we need at least in this plan through 2027. After that, we can start out with a discussion of when this Fenway Field, did we put that up? Is, you know, it has youth sports collapsed, so we don't need to do that, I mean, those are the things you look at when you get closer. Just like the whole plan, every, yeah, back to my point, every year, you look at this plan, you see if priorities have changed. You know, maybe all the fences at Fenway Field are corroded because there was some Chinese steel that didn't work, so all of a sudden, we found that out, we're gonna have to replace it.
Are you making that up or is that real?
I'm making it up.
Okay, thank you.
I hope I made, but, so most of it, just as an extreme example, but you have to, you have to look and, and you have to adapt every year on not only this plan, the street plan, everything else, and I know this is very difficult, it's difficult to, for the council, it's difficult for the staff to recommend that we spend this kind of money all at once for parks, for buildings, for streets, for equipment, for everything, but again, on, on broken record, it's because we haven't done it.
So I guess, you know, we look at this, the Tower Park rinks, was this part of the 2014 plan, the rinks, fields, splash pads, Gate Park Pavilion Gardens, I mean, that's.
Well, the reason that's in there, again, is if we go forward with the new Public Works facility, we're gonna have to figure out repurpose that space. And looking at some of the new data from draft plan is it shows us short on a number of things that we could put in that part to get us up to some of those standards. Again, when we get there, when we get closer, that's a decision that the park board and the council needs to discuss and make. But it's out far enough, you got plenty to have to do it.
So, but was that determined in the 14 plan?
No, that was, that was added in 14, and that's in the new plan.
Because I, I mean, that one in particular, I agree that the, the rinks down there, they get used, they need an upgrade. I don't know if it's embarrassing or being creative, or you share the warming house with the sign shop, you know, I mean, that's, it's, that needs to be, you know, addressed.
It needs, definitely, and that's why it's there, and that's why it's that far out, because we need time to determine the few things have to happen for us to even begin to, one of those is, does the Public Works facility?
I, I've pulled us down into a very project-specific conversation and I know, like, just like the streets conversation, this was intended to be more project-agnostic, more around funding overall. Because I, I do get back to that we are walking right back into a chicken and egg conversation of put the new park commission in place and say, go forth and do great work, and they're going to say, okay, here's the plan, are you going to fund it? And so I think that we are back to project-agnostic, like what, and we thankfully don't need to answer this tonight, but in the very near term, what are we comfortable with into, you know, some level of general fund support? Because I think we, I think we at least owe some level of financial commitment to that new park commission. Or else they, we're, we're locking them into essentially, you know, what we've historically done, which is do what you can with park dedication, which we know is insufficient. Unless we say that is our plan, and I'm, I'm just, I'm personally not ready to say that, and I think there's a better way. And it's hard to make some financial commitment without details on where that is, but I think that's kind of the needle we need to thread here in the next couple of months is be comfortable with some level of base funding so that we can then hand that to the park commission here, here's, here's what you have to work with.
Quick question, um, so I see we're in 2028 and that's where we go, you know, we're done playing catch-up and we're going, looking forward. And that 4.5 million is for the three years of upgrades at Fenway Park as it's proposed today. Where's the funding for the 31 and 32 investments at Tower Park, where does the funding for that come from?
We didn't put any funding in for those yet, just because it's far, is that part out there? Where we're looking at what our levy needs to be right now and what's out, what's, it's good to have on the radar when you're starting to look nine, 10 years out, but this is our discussion now. A lot of things need to fall into place in regards of the Public Works facility and what direction that part, that part goes, so when you're looking at, so when we were looking at that, that's why we didn't put anything in the plan for that. If, again, if that was, it would probably be at this point looking at bonds, grant funding, any sorts of that nature, state legislator for anything like that, so. That was the reasoning for not putting any bonds in for, for that specific one. Where with Fenway being identified in the plan and being more four to five years out, it felt more reasonable to put, put something in there that this could be the impact as it is a little bit more near-term.
So we're, we're doing that bond, bond issue in 28, but we're not using that money for three years, is that just for a workflow standpoint?
That's for a workflow standpoint, it's, it's for work, my understanding is, is workflow, how much work can you get done? And by issuing it all in one year, you're gonna be able to save costs. Three years is historically where you can issue bonds ahead of time.
Yep.
Where you're not running into any issues with arbitrage, with the government and, and those sort of things, so it is a benefit to this issue that all in one year rather than 1.5, 1.5 and try to plan that out there. That way the funds are there when you need them and.
Well, the, the Fenway, 1.5 for three years, that's a big part, that wouldn't be a three-year barrage. So you take your planning and probably two years construction, so that spreads out the, the cost that you're gonna need, that's gonna take that.
And is the bond repayment in here, or what's the line item, where, where the bonds getting repaid?
That'll be, that's on some, some slides coming up, the bonds get paid out, when you issue bonds, you have to create its own debt service fund. Where the specific debt levy, a tax levy associated to pay that debt goes specifically into that fund. And the principal and interest gets paid out of that fund as well. So that's where you don't see any principal and interest comes in here, the funds come in here. And then with the tax levy, the separate tax levy that would be then issued for both debt would be tracked in a separate fund. And I had that scheduled out similarly like how we had our tax levy.
So it's on top of the 500,000 a year?
What's that?
So that's on top of the 500,000 a year?
That would be on top of 500,000 a year, the 500,000 is just in this park fund to basically fund some capital, and we go back a little bit to looking at what we're issuing, for example, 2.5 million in '24, but there's really not a big project. That 500,000 is kind of that reasoning. If you need to get a couple playgrounds for 150,000 each, that tax levy's covering those equipments, but since what Dave and Abby have said, this is all catch-ups, so now we have all these parks that are due. So they're adding up to this large amount where if you're just doing a, replacing a playground equipment once a year, one year, for example, or whatever that is, that 500,000 consistent levy is helping pay for those smaller capital improvements where the bonds are that for your Fenway, your Tower, like your big total reconstruction project, kind of like streets.
What do we, just one last, um, some of these park improvements, like looking at Manor Park for 125 and 24, what's the life expectancy of that then, I mean, what do we, what do we think we'll get out of it?
Twenty years.
Twenty years, okay, thank you.
I, I am maybe doing history a little bit of disservice because we, it's not that we haven't put any, it's true, we haven't put any general fund towards specific parks in the park budget, but we did build or helped to build and did bonding for the YMCA. And I, I kind of look at that as a one-time, had we not done that, that conceivably, conceivably those dollars would have gone for other sorts of recreation. It's, you know, kind of an opportunity cost, so that YMCA bond was issued, we, it was re, it was refinanced when we did our city center refinancing, right?
I don't know.
No, is it still separate, still separate? It'd be good to know what that debt service is each year and then when that matures. Because I, I do think in terms of like what the community has funded, that is, it's important to this topic.
The nine million dollar funding, one question about, the other question I have too is, you know, we're, we're still spending a certain amount of of Dave's budget on parks, period, it probably doesn't show on any of this. You know, we're still using Public Works for cutting grass and, you know, fixing the fence or whatever. So, uh, there's a certain amount of that budget that's going already into parks. Is there any way we can separate that somehow, or at least look at that?
Our budgeted amount for maintenance is 658,000 dollars for 2023.
And that, but that's, that's, everything is not just parks, sorry.
Mowing the grass, and that's just the parks one.
Oh, they're in the parks.
And that, is that fence repair or things like that, like where does that?
That, everything that's maintenance, so mowing, fixing the lawn mowers, repairing broken.
Yeah.
Parks, buying hanging baskets.
But not equip, park equipment maintenance?
There's a, there's a fun balance in there for, um, labeled as improvements, and that's what Jamie referred to, if we had money left over in the year in that, then they would say if we had like 20 some thousand left and they bought that playground for Bay Park. And, uh, drive down there and then next year they bought that thing completely, so. It all depends on what we have left at the end of the year. I mean, just to put in perspective that, the, the dragon at Cedar Park, the net that broke there, we just gotta invoice, say, 3,000 dollars to fix that net. So that's 10% of my operating supplies budget, just in one piece of one playground.
Does that include like lawn fertilizer and that kind of stuff too, Dave?
Just to answer your YMCA question, the bond was issued in 2014, and was issued in 2034.
And what's the annual debt, debt service?
It is just over 600,000, or 630,000.
And it was, how much was the bond?
Nine million, wasn't it?
Just give me a couple minutes. It's under nine million, 8.9 million?
Yep.
See that on our, on our schedule for debt coming forward, when you schedule out this debt, it's important where I, when I'm looking at the levies I have, when we have that, what's the final tax levy? When, when's this debt falling off, because when, when you can get, if you can get your debt structured in a way where you're issuing new debt when an old one's falling off, ideally, then there's not these, these spikes or increases, you're basically, an old one's falling off and replacing it with a new one. So if you can't get it to line up, that, that's ideal, and that's where, as this plan goes forward, depending on what's adopted with the streets and parks and whatnot. You know, right now, you know, for example, we're rolling, you know, Fenway, for example, all in three years, so maybe, maybe depending on the situation, maybe we can cash flow that for the first year, depending on the expense initiated a year later, to have it line up better with debt, so those are type of things as this plan goes forward. But this having it laid out, where we can reanalyze and going through it this year now, going back to these capital plans and just updating it and having it there has been, has been a big time saver, not only for myself but staff, that, well, here's what you had identified for equipment needs in '24, do you need it, does it need to get kicked back? What's the increased cost?
So with, so the scenario is looking for us to get to an annualized, yeah, so it's, it's, so you're looking for us to get to an annual levy of, amount of 500,000 dollars?
Correct.
Which is.
And that's just equipment and that kind of stuff, it's not, we already talked about the maintenance.
That's a level when looking at the plan, like, you're, you're never gonna have cash to pay for 4.5 billion dollars of Fenway. But looking at your playground replacement, trail improvements that are 100,000, 200,000, if you're doing 3, 400,000 of that, you know, then you have cash on hand to pay for that, where you're not having to go out and possibly issue a bond to get that done, or come up with some other funding source to make those, or end up in the situation where we're now, everything just keeps getting pushed back a year. So that's, that's where that level has come in, to, to keep up with those type of projects with that. All right, I'll keep going. So scenario, so scenario, the, the second scenario, without getting, without getting into, we've gone down into details. The difference on this, on this scenario is looking at the taxes, is that we're just increasing that tax levy 50,000 every year. Gradually to get. Gradually to get to five hundred thousand, where if you follow the plan for until twenty thirty two, you would be at five hundred thousand. Difference is when you look at twenty, uh, twenty four, there's a higher bond issue. It's a four million compared to two point five million. Because we're having to issue more debt to play catch up, um, instead of those funds accu, uh, accumulating up. Um, so that is, uh, the difference on this, on this scenario. All the projects are the same, all the years are the same, um, as far as that goes. Um, so that's, that's the difference with, um, with this one. Any questions on parks? Otherwise I'd go into the building and analyze that before you kind of look at the impact. And what those levies, um, potential increases in levies would be with all that, um, put together.
I think it's, I think it's just important for us to illustrate, we asked you to quantify everything, right? And so this feels like a lot, but we also asked you for a lot. So I, um, as painful as this is, I appreciate that it is. What I'm hearing is this is the list as you see it and it's good to see. It's painful to see it all in one place, but I appreciate the exercise.
Okay. On to building maintenance. Sorry about that. Okay. So for building maintenance, this is taking into account, uh, the city center, the south building and, um, this senior center. So dump a hole at the very bottom. There's, um, under the cash balance is a capital and maintenance plan. This is a summary in total of all the things identified on that spreadsheet that Patrick told earlier. There's a lot of details in there. Um, like he mentioned before, so instead of putting all that on here, this was just a summary snapshot of what that is. A lot of these costs for twenty twenty four are things that are past due, are overdue. In there, specifically with the solid building, you can see is three hundred sixty thousand dollars. But that, that's a new, um, parking lot that's long overdue, um, some insulation and siding on there and then, um. New roof, I believe, too, is a majority of costs in there. So, so looking at this fund, um, as Patrick mentioned in the slides for twenty twenty four, starting at a seventy five thousand dollar, uh, property tax levy. Um, increasing it to that hundred and fifty thousand dollar level. I'll get into that on the next scenario a little bit as will be easier to see why we, my, that. Hundred fifty thousand dollars was picked. Um, the other funding source in here is the senior center, count closing line item fifty thousand. Uh, before the city took over the senior center, there was a nonprofit, from my understanding, that ran the senior center. That nonprofit is technically still active as a five oh one C three. They have about fifty thousand dollars sitting in that nonprofit. So right now, city staff is working. Through the legalities of closing that down and having that move over, um, contributed to, to the city, um, for that. So that, that's what that number represents, um, for the senior center. The one thing that's not accounted for in here, as we mentioned before, is the solid building. That's when you look at the cash balances, it's a, it's a pretty large deficit every year. We then identify a funding source for that and then feel appropriate to put anything in there right now as we're still analyzing that to determine. What's, what's the direction of that building and what, what type of costs we want to, we want to sink into that. It's more for illustrative purposes that if we, if we do go forward and catch up on our maintenance that. Um, it's quite, it's a quite large dollar amount associated with that. So going to the next page on scenario two, uh, the difference on this one is on that capital and maintenance plan. It took out the south, uh, building expenditures of three hundred sixty thousand. Out completely. So that's where when you start looking at the, at the cash balance and where we got to a hundred fifty thousand dollar level. We build up to that level, that pretty much keeps us up with the maintenance that's coming up in twenty four and twenty five. And it sets us up for, um, some rather large, possibly, possibly large expenditures in twenty twenty eight, uh, for the senior center building. Um, it does go a little bit negative there, but just looking at, that it's five years down the road and. Uh, different factors that play into that where, you know, some of the things in there are toilets or carpets and. You don't think that, that are small, but can add up to large dollar amounts until we actually go through that and narrow that down some. Um, that, that's where the hundred fifty thousand came from. That it really looks like that's the number that. Um, not only pays for things in here, but then also does build a fund balance of cash users for those unexpected things that, that maybe come up. Maybe you have your AC units, you have them planned for twenty thirty three, for example, but they go on in twenty twenty eight. While we have funds there that we're able to cover those costs because things like, things like that do happen. Any questions on, uh, building maintenance or how that, how that fund's lining up right now? Otherwise I'll go into, um, looking at the impact on the tax levy. The street parts and building.
The only question I'd have is on the revenue line for scenario one. I mean, is the rent that M view or Fairview's paying, is that significant enough to even include as a revenue source?
So right now that's been dedicated to the capital equipment fund, four oh one. So that what, that was a discussion that we had internally. Well, where, where's that rent? Should it be going in? Into this fund now if this is how the direction we're going to go. That's a discussion that we certainly can't have. Does it impact that? But that's also offsetting some possible levy increases in the four oh one fund. So if, in my, it all goes back to why we do it with that south building. Are you going to continue to rent it? Are we selling that? You know, what, what's really that plan? For, for that. And if it's something where we're going to rehab it, we're going to keep renting it, then that's, that's a very good. Possible, um, scenario where that rent would go in there, but then we would have to reanalyze four oh one and make sure that we, that we need to offset. Offset that revenue in that fund as well. Okay. Now the fun tab. Um, so tax levy projections, as I labeled scenario one, um, the streets, all the street, the, like, let me back up a little bit. So the capital improvement fund, the term line item down, as discussed before, um, we recommended just bumping that up to nine hundred fifty thousand one time. Now, excuse me, not one time bumped up to nine hundred fifty thousand and then maintain that, that level for, for the next years and then get that up to one million. So that's built in there. Um, the line above the park dedication fund, you can see that is fifty thousand dollar tax levy in twenty three. With bumping it up to five hundred thousand and then maintaining that level consistently through twenty thirty three. It also does build down under, in the proposed bonds, um, third one down for park improvements. Um, that two, two point five million of bonds being issued and then having a tax levy start in twenty twenty four to pay for any principal. And interest that is due in twenty twenty five. And then also a couple lines down, there's also park improvements built, park improvement bonds built in. Uh, and that is for the possible Fenway, um, project. So again, depending on how that looks or what the direction of that is, that is something that could change. But right now it's just given that it's in the next few years, that's going to be addressed. It felt appropriate to at least. Put something in there just to, just to have it on, on our radar and your radars as well for what that potentially. Going to the next scenario, scenario two, the two changes on this tab compared, on this sheet compared to the first one is the park dedication fund. You can see that that just had, that has a fifty thousand dollar increase every year till we get to that five hundred, to that five hundred thousand dollar. That, with that, that changes the amount of bonds that would, would be proposed to be issued in twenty four from two point five million to, uh, four million. So you can see that, uh, with that, there's a higher levy that associated with to pay the higher principal. And higher interest on those proposed, uh, park improvement bonds.
And what's the inflation rate we're using on the general fund? I see that's increasing each year.
The general fund is built on a five percent increase annually with any, uh, positions that were identified. Prior, in the previous year that would need to be added at an estimated cost.
That's the inflation impact?
So the inflation impact is five percent.
Okay.
And then last year through the twenty twenty three budget process, staff said, here's our plan for staffing needs for the next ten years. So any, uh, staffing that was identified in those years, for example, there was a new, um. CSOs, you know, were put in for next year. Those dollar amounts for what a CSO would be, are added into that.
And we'll update that in the budget process whether that's where you go or some other positions are going to go. But also. Remember we have all our labor contracts that are settled at about three percent. So.
Well, I guess, I mean, it's reasonable to include inflation for those sorts of things. Is it reasonable to think that we won't need to increase some of these funds with inflation as well?
Uh, the debt funds are going to be set. When you, when you issue debt, they're going to give you a specific schedule saying this is the amount that you need to levy every year.
No, I get that.
So for that is, so for that is straightforward, but you're exactly right with the capital, with the park. You know, EDA, all those other funds are paying for equipment. That's where this plan is so important. It needs to be revisited each year. Uh, just, uh, a couple of days ago, I sent all out to department heads, you know, here's what the equipment you identified for twenty four. Please let me know if you still need it and update the cost. You know, we're in this, with vehicles, the cost was going like this. Ideally, they start to flatten out or start to come back down. But if those costs are still rising, if we budgeted a pickup truck for, for example, fifty thousand, if we put it in the. Identifying in twenty twenty four for fifty thousand, well, now it's a year later. Is it still fifty thousand? Is it forty five thousand or did it skyrocket now at seventy thousand?
Yeah.
You know, put that constant. So that's where these plans are a very great tool, but when they're constantly being addressed and when. They're really used as a tool to create the budget because that, that's an essence of what it is. And then not only the current year budget, but the plan out so you can see the path that the city needs going from every aspect of every fund.
And for council, we call us, there's a few of yous that in the last few years, we've seen astronomical increases in fire trucks, police cars. Cloud trucks, pickup trucks, just outrageous. Uh, so we're hoping that we'll have a lot. Try to plan for that and because we will update those numbers, try to get new vendors and see if they're close to what we think they might be.
Five percent is the inflationary, um, index and the, wha, what are you, where are we for interest rates? Like what is, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but are, are you, do you have some? Are you, are you modeling this with current interest rates or?
Per, for debt?
Yeah, for the debt service.
It's three point five percent.
Okay.
You know, I, what's that?
It's a.
It, it's, it's, it's a pretty good number. So you're going to be high, you're going to be low and that's where. You can look at it as a mortgage, you know, you could get, do you follow this plan and you, you know, you adopt it, but then two years on the road, those rates are five percent, right? Well, to keep going with the planner, keep now, or do you go back down that road of kicking it down the road? And that's where. Um, the city issued some bonds in two thousand nineteen and refunded some of those bonds that are at a high interest rate because. At the time, we, it was issued, they needed, needed the funds, but then rates came down and that's where working closely with ours who's our consultant on these. Um, we, when I reach out to him or talk to him, they're, they're looking at our bonds and they can tell me if, hey, if you refund, if you refinance this bond or refund it, you're going to save. You know, sometimes it could be a million dollars of interest. So, you know, that, those are things that when we're looking at and roll those into. You can roll those into the same bond and be creative with how you do it to save interest, to save issues cost and, and, and do that.
That's what we did in two thousand nineteen, we had to save a billion.
Yeah, well, it was really a low interest rate back then, wasn't it? Like one percent?
I think it was one point, uh.
Yeah.
Um, there's somewhere in this three hundred twenty five pages at this.
Oh, I'm pulling that out of my memory and there's.
It was, it was either the one, I think it was the ones or maybe just right over two, but I mean. We had a big, we had a big, uh, we had a lot of, the thing about that, the nice thing about larger bonds is it attracts more bidders. And when you track more bidders, you get better rates where you get interest on some of the costs. So. You know, nineteen million dollar bond is very attractive bond in the market than, uh, compared to a two million. When you start getting up to that kind of, actually, I think the bond is just, so, because we combined them.
He would command this building.
We combined this building with some, with streets and a few other things, refinancing. When you really get up there, you, we got a lot of bidders in that and really saved us a lot.
Um, so when we, there's areas of our budget that are easy, lend themselves closer to user fees. And lend themselves more towards alternative sources of revenue other than just tax levy. Um, did the park plan talk about any of that about, I don't know. And I don't know what other cities have done to solve for this, but you know, some sort of a park sticker. I don't, I, I don't know what this, what that looks like, but some sort of usage fee or, um, you know, Fenway is used, you know. By a lot of youth sports organizations that have maybe a different ability to pay than a neighborhood park. We ha, and again, we're in the land of no good options. And so this is me just spitting out bad ideas that nobody really likes, but I think we should at least.
Park user fees can be a good idea. Uh, you know, Flo pays some twenty, some thousand dollars a week or somewhere in there for, for their access to fields. Uh, the problem is you don't, we don't run a lot of programs, so we don't have a lot of user fees. Like a state park, you don't have a central entrance that you can stop people and pay them. It's a neighborhood park. It's Lake Park. You have to be, you've got limited options as far as park fees go. You know, you've got special events when they use the park. You've got this and that, but it won't get, it won't get.
I guess one, one comment too is to keep in mind, I know I follow the park side of things and, you know, Hugo just developed a brand new park. I don't know if you've seen it, but it's drawing a lot of people there. Um, Lionel Lakes just put in a new park and that's just, you know, replacing old equipment. So it really attracts people to those areas. Um, I know the first few years is kind of catch up work and replacing and putting in some new equipment, but. Um, really, you know, obviously keeping in mind that really people moving to communities really like new families. They like a good, strong parks and trail system. And as the community continues to grow and new developments come in. I think that in the long run, it will help and, you know, attract people here and increase the tax base to help offset that down the road. Um, so I always keep track of what our neighboring communities are doing. And if you haven't been to Hugo, like that's an amazing park, you know, they just invested in that. So. Just keeping that in mind of the economic impact and getting people into Forest Lake. And with the Parks Commission, we did talk a lot about keeping people here, um, in the community. We have people leaving Forest Lake quite often for different activities and going to different parks and such. So. Just my little parks plug on the importance and really keeping that in mind in the big picture, um, to, to get them back and something that the community is proud of. So.
I know the park where I, you know, where, where we live, it's busy all the time. It just, there, there's no place to park sometimes. So, I mean, they're, they're necessary. It all depends on how much collaboration we can get from taxpayers. They're footing the bill. Simple as that. And, and I'd sure like to hear from them. Because I think you're going to have a lot of them that would support, you know, extra money into the parks. And of course you're going to have some that won't for sure. Probably, I don't know what the ratio is, but it can be a tough, tough deal.
I think as we, as we, even before we get into. You know, each one of these pro, park projects kind of requires its own separate level of planning. But before we even get into that, I do think. You know, some communication document or something that can help kind of illustrate the path we're on and the types of like current state versus. What the planned upgrades would be, I think is just really helpful, um. Because it's a, it's a story of a lot of small projects and a lot of catch up of things that we haven't done. And, um, I think everyone. everyone, I think people generally are aware of the condition of their community park right by where they live. But it's easy to forget about just how many of them we have and the overall condition. To your point, kind of telling that story is, I think, helpful.
I don't want to get into the YMCA. That's.
It's, it's, and I don't mean to, I, I, I support the YMCA. It's, it's just that I als, I also though look at that is, as much as we might say, we don't have general fund dollars going to recreation, we do. We have six hundred thousand dollars a year going to a recreation facility. It just happens to not be owned by the city, which was by our design.
It was our annual budget that year.
But there is, I mean, that is a, that is, those are real dollars that do have impact. And it's, it's a opportunity cost for sure of, that means that some of these other projects haven't been done.
Not to mention the land that it's sitting on.
So I, I, I just keep hearing that the catch-up. We need to catch up on this. We need to catch up with this. And so to, to make, you know, it's really frightening to thought, I think that this council has to be the ones to play catch-up on all of these different areas. We are looking at, we're doubling the, you know, from thirteen to twelve to twenty-nine million in two thousand thirty-three. It's scary.
It's daunting. It's daunting.
So I don't know if it's picking and choosing which the priorities or where to catch up first, that has to happen. I just, to, to start, this whole thing is really, I don't know.
We realize it's an overwhelming plan. But I, I think you would really see, this is now where we start the discussions of how this is all shakeout. If you want to make priorities, or if you want to do something different, those are the coming months between now and summer. I mean, easily you can settle levy in September that, let's just say includes all of this. But then by the time into December, make it work. There's a lot of discussion that we have to have. And I anticipate, once we have the operating budget numbers, we will bring you probably the budget earlier than we have people. And all of your workshops won't be lightweight budget talk. It'll be like, what do you want to do? I don't know. How do we want to approach that yet? Whether we want to take it by a hole or if we want to take it by the funds. But there are certain things we, you know, there are certain funds we cannot change, debt service and capital equipment, because when we talk about, you know, thirty million streets and excellent parks, maybe we can start figuring out where to go. But I know it's got, it's just, it's just.
Back to your original comment, Patrick, around the last, you know, last episode of this series. This is it, right? This.
There are no more components that you haven't seen. And I don't believe it. We've covered, we've shown you the general fund. Obviously, that may change as, I think, that's, that's, that's our operating consequence. But we know the capital fund, which is our capital, actually, the capital equipment fund is, we've shown you that, what it's gonna take for what trucks, fire trucks, police cars, all of that. We've showed you the capital improvement fund, which includes streets and other things like that. So you know the number there. You don't have to worry about the utility funds, that they're supposed to stay. We've shown you the park fund now. We've shown you the buildings. We don't have to worry about the airport. That's, that's in good shape because of the share posted, because of the share we get from all the projects. So I think you've seen everything. You know, it's just depending on, it's really focusing, probably wanting to focus on the capital fund and all of the new streets, public works, buildings and so forth, and park funds. But those are a few of the basics. So I don't know what else I would give you, but now, I think we've covered everything. I also, it could be more, but I just don't know.
I think, you know, the council has a lot to chew on here. There's no question about it. But at the same time, you gotta know the truth. You gotta know what's going on. And if there's a way that we can figure out some answer to this, you know.
That's why we're here. That's why we, that's why three years ago, whatever the strategic plans said infrastructure, infrastructure, parks, parks, two things. And then that worked into, well, we know where we're at. How do we get there? And that's when we switched to a ten-year plan. And we switched to a ten-year plan, because most capital plans traditionally are five years. But we didn't get, well, we couldn't get five years. And he would come close to that. And to what we were doing. And ten years is pushed based on how far we have. But at least it's a, it's a starting.
Besides the levy, what other options do we have as far as raising money? Is there?
You, you don't have a lot. You have a levy. You have a possible sales tax as far as that goes. And we will look at anything else. But local government, at least the non-chartered governments like the Stetchford charter that we are, we don't have a lot. You know, we could, we can raise fees and things, but we never get to, to fund the streets and parks, buildings and everything else. So it's really levy and sales tax. I mean, you may get some more money, depending what the legislature does with, with local share. But again, maybe that could be a bunch.
You can't count on it, that's for sure.
Can't count on it. And then the last, the last number I saw, we don't get a local share anymore as far as operating those. We have too big. So we went down to zero a few years ago. And I think the new formula gets us to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars or something. You know, that's, that's, you know, a quarter of street or something. So, yeah, you're right. And we will, we will continue to look and give you suggestions at other opportunities as far as, I mean, we need a park perfect for grants. We need to be aggressive with that. We will be, we, you know, we've got three hundred thousand per per. You know, when we talk about Fenway, that's a major project in nature. But yeah, sales tax and.
Well, you know, the only other thing you can count on is development coming, especially commercial development, that's gonna help on down the road. That would soften the blow some, for sure.
That's why I support keep your mail, your land developed. You know, taking all that term somewhat.
You bet. That brings up another subject. We're not gonna go there. We're not gonna go there, but.
But you see the importance of totally impacting us to sacrifice any of that for other reasons. Handicap us.
Right.
Maybe an area of just a check-in point, you know, the scenarios that have been placed in front of us have two years of sizable increase. So you've got two spikes and then you've got more nominal increases in those other years. Personally, I like that approach. I think it's pal, it's easier to talk about, you know, kind of set expectations on, we've got two, if we are going to accomplish this plan, we are going to do it with two large spikes and we can communicate that. You can communicate what that is for. Personally, I'd rather us commit to a couple of large, again, spikes rather than, I would, I would be nervous with us trying to like smooth this out. I just think it dumbs it down. It creates opportunities for less commitment along the way. It, it, things, I think, kind of fall apart if we aren't committed to some level of, okay, we're gonna take a big bite here. And being able to identify when those are, I think, is helpful. And I've, I've swung a little bit both ways on this, as I've thought, because I'm, part of me is also like, well, if you just smooth it out a little bit, it's a little, it just becomes the, the norm. And I just feel like this community is gonna really struggle with a norm that is double-digit increases every year for ten years. And I'm not sure if that's what that would, how that math would turn out. But Kevin's nodding his head. It's probably not too far off. I just think that's untenable and just feels like it's just this runaway uncontrolled versus you can, we can at least communicate to a couple of large jumps. That might be the only, like, concrete feedback I have at this point.
I mean, we would consult with ours, but Kevin and I have been through this pretty much, not only in careers, but for these topics. These are pretty solid ones. I also misspoke about not having anything to add to this. You haven't even begun to consider the downtown plan. And we just made it thirty-five million dollars that they had supposed to pay to move downtown. I have no answer for you on that yet. I mean, it's, we need to fix our infrastructure. We need to concentrate on that. We also need to look at our downtown, but I don't have right now an idea of how to do that yet. So keep that in the back of your mind. Maybe that's a next year thing. Maybe that's a two-year thing. But that's sitting out there. You have a plan that you really want to go forward with. But how do you do it? You, you know, that when you go to state, so just keep that in your mind. That is not anywhere on this plan whatsoever.
I'm glad you corrected that. And, yeah. Other thoughts, points of feedback as we kind of digest this information? I'm open to some feedback on, you know, timing to bring the park, a park commission, reappoint the park commission. I could, there's some benefit to having, you know, many eyes at the table and people understanding where we're at. I do know our, we have now, we have had a park board and a park commission and both ultimately, you know, there was a lot of frustration around just scope of work and funding. And so, you know, we're, I wanted to at least hold off till we got through this meeting. I'm open to, you know, we don't have a budget answer for them now, but, you know, to bring, you know, bring them in and, you know, start, you know, certainly having them be part of the budget conversations this summer. I think there's some benefit to that. But there really is an important part of their, their work that is missing in that we kind of have this question mark over there.
We have to explore every, every idea that's out there.
Right.
No question about it.
And to that point, having more, you know, seats at the ta, more people at the table and more ideas is, I think there's value to that.
So I guess my thought on that is, you know, this is coming from a, a plan that, you know, this from a two thousand fourteen plan, which was some time ago, and then a new draft apparently. I think having them come on board sooner than later and charge them with, what do you think of this? Is this something that still is relevant that it was X amount of years ago? And I think, you know, just we're talking, I think this council is agreeable to some of this, maybe not all the, exactly what, you know, but, I mean, we, we realize, I think we're on consensus that we realize we need to do something here. We need to play some kind of catch-up. So there's gonna be some, I would think, some funds there to like, you know, give them that direction with those monies. What it exactly is, that's hard to tell. But I think sooner the better, we can get them on board. And, and also, you know, maybe invite that previous board to have some input on this. It would be important.
I had invited both of them to be at this meeting tonight and they weren't able to make it. But, but yeah, certainly.
I, I take part, the other part of that scenario is kind of looking at our surrounding communities and find out what they're doing with levies and comparison with taxes and where are we? Are we way high? Way low? Where are we? Let's find out where we are and try to be fair with everybody.
I do know that the Hugo, you know, that Hugo plan came together. That was ten years in the works for them to, you know, initial concept plan to what is the funding and them, you know, selling that, that bond to their community and getting consensus. And so it was not, it was long, it was a long time in the making. All right. Any other points of feedback? Patrick, Kevin, anything else for us?
None.
With that, twenty twenty-four budget priorities.
Well, let's go with number eight first.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to skip that.
Knowing that the public works building is a necessity in our community, we have budgeted funds in two thousand twenty-three, in two thousand twenty-three for a needs assessment. We have a draft of that and we'd like to tell you when we can put that out. Before we even know, nail out this cost and all that stuff, we need to know what that might look like. So we're gonna put an RFP out to, to hire a firm to do a needs assessment for the public works building, which helps size, okay, we already know location, but all the other stuff that we planned for, that's some kind of estimated cost that's associated with that. We can't look forward, you can't look forward to the decision whether you want to do it, whether you not want to do it, whether you want to just phase it. We need to do that now so we know what that number is as well. So unless I hear differently, we will sometime this summer put out an RFP for a needs assessment for the public works. With that, I would like to suggest possibly, since we do not have an EDA meeting next Monday, is that the council meets at the public works building at six o'clock issue so we can show you the public works building and its current status and status. So you get an idea of why we're talking about going and finding and getting them built. I think it's, I think it's important. I think in the long run, you save yourself money building a new building, where you get all your equipment inside, it's not the weather, you're not, you save labor time for not going to six different locations to get your equipment and so forth and so on. I think you all need to see that. So unless there's objection, we will schedule a mini tour at six o'clock, if you're available.
I.
Yeah, I just, I just check my calendar. I'm good.
It's okay with me.
I think that's a great idea.
So that's what we'll do.
And we'll tour at six o'clock and then meet, we'll meet there at seven?
We, I, I believe that it'll be at six and we can walk back there.
Come back here.
Or drive down the road.
What, what was budgeted for the needs assessment? Do you want that dollar?
I believe it was fifty thousand dollars.
Fifty thousand in two thousand twenty-three.
Thanks.
So we have a draft. I have a draft. I haven't looked at it for a few months, but sometime then I'll get back to it. We'll put it on the street and see if that's us. That's, that's the public works building. As far as budget priorities, I asked at the last meeting, I may not have that till yet, but if you have ideas that you think should be in the budget, that we need to know what those are so we can pass them on. So we like them sooner than later, probably within the next five, in the latest next, you know, sometime like the fifteenth of June. So we can look at them if we have to pass something out. You can email them to me, you can email Kevin. We can have them at the next workshop if you want to, whatever the case may be. We need to know. We ask this every year. What are your priorities? What do you want us to look at? What do you want us to add? Do you have any concerns? So if you have those, we appreciate you giving those to us. And we will go through those if there are major changes or major initiatives.
Anyone have anything immediately that is on your punch list you'd like to mention? I suspect this may be lower and given the size of what we've just talked about, this is a, a smaller reach. But I think clarifying the landscaping downtown, we've talked about doing updated banners, working with the Lions Club on updated banners. It is maybe in conjunction with something around some sort of code enforcement or some sort of policy on the weedy lots and the, the lots that aren't getting snow removal. I, it, it's the, when we talk about our downtown, it's the one thing that I think is in our hundred percent, it's, it's more in our control than some of the other factors downtown. And I think it's high impact for relatively low dollar. And maybe I don't have appetite right now for anything bigger.
Just Kevin's, Kevin's keeping the list. We will see what those are. Thank you. That's all we have.
Excellent. And with that, we are at the end of our planned agenda. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
One more second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye, oppose. The motion carries. Thank you everyone for adjourned.